Okay, we're gonna start our meeting. Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. On our agenda, we have the first thing is our word of call to order. Our city clerk will give our roll call.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. The next thing is our pledge of allegiance and our invocation. Deacon Ron Arnold from Saint Francis Assisi of Catholic Church will be doing that for us today. And please, if you'll remain standing for the invocation.
Me in saying the pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we bow our heads as we pray. Loving Father, we are thankful for this day and what you have given to us, for its blessings, for its opportunities, and even its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, and for each day's duties, and for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence in helping us. Tonight, we pray especially for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I ask that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and the issues of our time, for a sense of true needs of the citizen in whom they serve, for a keen trust, for justice and righteousness, for confidence in what is right and good, and the necessity, and the necessity of ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. I also pray for the agenda set before them tonight as well. May each of its actions and outcomes be fitting and pleasing to you, and may they benefit all those who live and work in our beloved city. In your most blessed name, amen.
Amen. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing will be the approval of our agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item P2, proclamation to Rosemary Marino. And the reason for that is she's unable to make it tonight, so we will be bringing this back at a future meeting. And I also wanted to mention that on June 11th, for item D1, which was the smoking ordinance issue, that there were six letters that were presented to the city clerk on June 11th that were considered an add to packet, but were not distributed to all of the council, but were put in the system itself within Laserfish that the public can access online. So I just wanted to make you aware that there were six letters that were in support of the smoking ordinance.
Thank you. Have reports on our closed session. Our city attorney, Piper?
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this afternoon on item CS1. No reportable action was taken.
The next thing on our agenda, and we're going to do presentations, and we have a letter of appreciation for Tom Dubose and Juan Paz from the Sheriff's Department for the contributions to the graffiti tracking, but Juan Paz is unable to be here tonight. So our Sheriff's Captain Joe Rody and our Public Works Supervisor Chris Arcey are here to join us at the podium.
has made some significant graffiti arrests to the tune of 1,800, or a little over 1,800 individual acts of graffiti with a total cost to the city of over half a million dollars in reimbursements. It's become a huge problem in this town, and because of these gentlemen's help, we were able to arrest three of the most significant taggers right now that we have. So with that said, I would like to read to Tom Dubose. You are not Tom, but you are being Tom tonight? The Vista Cops Unit has identified and apprehended several prolific taggers during the period of October 2012 through May 2013. These have been high-profile news arrests. The taggers caused a significant quantity of graffiti vandalism to the City of Vista property and numerous private property owners. In one case, the estimated damage was 160,000, and in another, it was over 250,000. Hundreds of vandalism incidents have been documented utilizing an investigative tool, Graffiti Tracker. Graffiti Tracker is a web-based service that allows deputies and city cleanup crews to document and track acts of graffiti vandalism. After a crime has been committed, it is accurately documented, detailed. Information is inputted in Graffiti Tracker, and graffiti is removed by the city workers daily. The meticulous work done by the city workers has led to the identification, arrests, and prosecutions of numerous graffiti hoodlums, as well as restitution for the victims. San Diego Sheriff's Department Vista Station would like to hereby recognize and commend the diligent and professional efforts of Tom Dubose and Juan Paz, and the City of Vista graffiti cleanup crews who have all helped to incarcerate criminals, as well as beautify the City of Vista. Thank you, gentlemen.
If you have anything you want to say, no, you don't. But you have to have your photo taken, so.
Mayor, while you're walking up, if I might add that Tom and Juan did a great job, along with the Public Works Department, eradicating graffiti in the city. And it's typically our approach to eradicate the graffiti within 24 to 48 hours after we're notified of it. And we do have a new direct dial line for graffiti, so if you'd like to report graffiti, we need your help. It's 760-639-6177. And you can leave a message. You can leave a message on graffiti, streetlights out, pothole repair, anything you need to, and the Public Works Department will take care of that for you. So thank you.
The next, the next presentation we're going to give, certificates of appointment to our incoming commission and committee members, so I'll come down there and do that. Okay, with that, our incoming appointments, Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board, and that is DeeDee Timmons. I saw DeeDee. Come on up, DeeDee. Congratulations. The next person on the Central Vista Business Improvement District Advisory Board is Robert Vance. I see him down there, too. Oh, is Brad Peterson? I don't see Brad. I think he maybe doesn't hear today. And Leroy is not here. Leroy's on a vacation right now. So the next one will be Gabriella Isablas, and it's for Community Safety Commission. Is she here? Is Gabriella here? Oh, there you are. And I don't think Bob Carter's here either. I don't see him. So we'll pass on his. Let's get that to him. He's on the Investment Advisory Committee. Lisa Sykes, Parks and Recreation Commission. Is Lisa here? There she is. I don't think John Henry Land is here either. I don't see him. So he's not here. He's also on Parks and Recreation Commission. Debbie Kramer, is Debbie here? That's a reappointment for our Planning Commission. I don't see Debbie. There's Helen Rigby. I think I saw her. She is our Public Arts Commissioner. Senior Citizens Affairs, Margaret Kuhn. Is Margaret here? Ah, there she is. Also Senior Affairs Commission, Sharon Latimer. I saw her back there. Or Larimer. Sorry. Sorry, Sharon. I know that name by own. Larimer. Sorry. Carolyn Ches- Chavester, is she here? Oh, you are there. I didn't see you back there. Sharon Larimer, Traffic Commission, also. She's doing double duty this year. And one more, Rudolph Mercado. Is Rudolph here? There he is. Those are all new commissioners, and we appreciate the service. They haven't done it yet, but we appreciate their service all year on our commissions, so we want to thank them. So that would be all of those. Let's see, the next thing, ah, the next thing, San Diego Gas and Electric. We have Amber. Amber got married, so she has a new name. Is it Turru? Is that right?
Much better than I did initially. When my Dutch family is in town, I have to pronounce it properly with rolling Rs and guttural Gs, so I'll spare the microphone that torture. Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, thank you so much for having me here this evening. There's two things I wanted to briefly go over with you. I'll be respectful of your time, and knowing that this is a lot of information, I'm more than happy to do any additional follow-up that you feel would be necessary. The two things I wanted to cover with you today were our summer outlook and what we're expecting for bills this summer. Summer outlook is pretty good news. We are expecting that we can meet our summer demands. However, I know that all of you have seen what happened with San Onofre on June 6th, or June 7th, when they decided to permanently shut it down. That gives us about a nine-year resource adequacy gap that we were not anticipating. So it's more than just the supply on the system. We have enough supply to meet our demands, but it's the voltage support that's also a big issue for us. It's basically moving those electrons around, and San Onofre was exceptionally helpful to us in that regard. What we are doing now is a variety of different upgrades to our transmission system to alleviate those issues. Last year, another Band-Aid that we had was the Huntington Beach units being online. Their air credits have since expired, and so we will not have Huntington Beach online, but fortunately, they've been converted over to that voltage support piece that I mentioned previously. So that's very helpful. The other thing that's been very helpful to us is the fact that we have Sunrise Online. We wouldn't have made it through last year without Sunrise, and we certainly wouldn't make it through this year without Sunrise. So we are in a position where we feel that we have adequate supplies to meet demands, but like I said, it could change anytime. Weather is a huge factor when it comes to our system in the summertime, so we are expecting this summer to be about four degrees warmer than previous summers. We've experienced pretty cool summers for the last few years, so if we do end up having a hotter summer and we have a heat wave, San Diegans are really good at saving for the first couple of days, but once day three, day four hits, we all sort of lose patience with the weather and crank up our ACs. So pay attention for, and I just want to urge all of the folks that are watching at home, to pay attention for any alerts that either the Cal ISO puts out, the Flex Alerts, or anything that STGNI puts out. If we do ask residents to conserve, we really need them, too. The other thing I really wanted to touch on today was the high-bill issues that we're experiencing this summer. This is unprecedented in the last decade of what we're about to go through. On the residential side, and you may or may not have seen it in the newspaper, the newspaper ran a story, I want to say, a couple of weeks ago, talking about increases to not only residences, but also businesses. The majority of our businesses will see an increase on the residential side because of the way the rate structure is set up in the state of California. About 25% to 30% of our customers will see an increase. That's about 300,000 of our customers, and those are only customers in that tier three, four side of the house. There's, there's four tiers, and they're based on usage. The lower two tiers haven't seen an increase in their rates in about 10 years because of the way that our rate structure is currently formed. There's a lot being done at the state legislature to try to resolve some of those issues. We're hoping that we'll see some movement in the next year on that end, but leading up into that, we definitely are working hard to reach out to those customers that are impacted on both the residential and the business side. Letters are going out this week. Directed emails are going out this week, and we've got a bunch of tools to try to support their needs and try to help them conserve energy this summer and going forward. I talked a little bit about what's causing the increase, but I just want to give you a little bit of a clearer picture. The regulatory timing is one of the things that most heavily impacted our rate increase that we're going to experience this year. Generally speaking, our, the Public Utilities Commission was about a year and a half late in giving us that decision. So the biggest reason why we're having this increase is that we're gonna have to play catch-up. Other issues that, I thought my time was up. I thought, this is new. Where's my light? So the flawed rate design that I talked about is a really big issue. The fact that we are playing catch-up from the last 17 months is another issue, but there's a lot of other things that go into the rates that are causing them to go up. We have 33% renewable energy mandates by 2020, new greenhouse gas emission, and other environmental mandates that we are required to meet, in addition to a lot of upgrades to the system that are actually great upgrades for our customers, from smart grids, smart meter, to other safety improvements that we've made over the past five or so years. So like I said, this is a lot of information to give you in a short, five-minute window, but I want to let you know that I'm available to you should you have any questions. I can answer some now if you'd like, or I'm more than happy to come back and continue working with you. The city itself has an account executive that's reached out to the city, and we will be giving you more information as we know exactly what impacts are to the city and city facilities. We're expecting a couple more decisions from the PUC that'll make that a little bit more clear in the next few weeks.
Okay, any questions? No questions right now, but I'm sure we'll have some later this summer when we see our rates go up. So come back, okay?
Well, I'll certainly be here to help, to support, so thank you for the time.
Thanks, Amber. Yeah, yeah. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar would be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and our items are C1 through C13. And we have two that have been removed by the public, which is our C10 and C11. Are there any other items that need to be moved by our council? Anybody? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. And with that, we will move to item C10, which are our long-range property management plan. And I'll have the staff do a short report on that.
Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is John Meyer. I'm the redevelopment and housing director. The property management plan is a key milestone in the dissolution process established by AB 26 and AB 1484. Per the legislation, all property owned by the former redevelopment agency must be sold with the proceeds sent to the county auditor controller to be distributed to the various taxing entities. The format of the property management plan was established by the Department of Finance. As outlined in the staff report, properties were labeled as governmental use, recognized obligations, future development, sale of property, and other. We have issued a request for qualifications to select a real estate broker to assist with the marketing of those properties that will be listed for sale. And in accordance with the legislation, action taken by the successor agency is subject to oversight board approval and review by the Department of Finance. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions first, before I have this? I have two speakers. Want to hear the speakers first? Okay, Robert Vance?
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Vance. I'm, my company is named Ford Vance Capital Advisors, and I serve on the, as the chairman of the Economic Restructuring Committee of the Vista Village Business Association. About a year ago, or sooner, we joined together with the city in an application to Sandag for a grant to basically modify the specific plan of the downtown and to create a culture and arts district. The impact of the arts on both the social and economic benefits are quite significant. So we felt that a arts district would be of great benefit to the revitalization of the downtown. And so in regards to the long-range management plan, I'm interested in knowing if the VVBA or a private contractor could practice or supply the successor agency with property management services for fee, thereby enabling private enterprise to perform the successor agency's properties, and then produce income from those properties to regenerate their economic value to the downtown. Not only hiring a real estate broker to dispose of the property that is intended to be sold, but to property, manage the properties that remain with the successor agency for development in the future, and thereby bringing a new, new perspective to the valuation, to creating value for those properties in the downtown, and integrating them with a long-range marketing plan for the development of a culture and arts district downtown. So that's why I'm approaching the council and the honorable mayor about this, and hoping that perhaps there's a, an approach that we might take together. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Chuck Rabel.
Mayor, council, Chuck Rabel here. We, a couple of questions if I can. The spreadsheet, which is awesome, omits a number of things, such as the, the income from the Chamber Building and the Chamber lease. Same with the VVBA property. Just, I know I'm picking nets, but when we go to our meeting on Thursday of the Oversight Board, I'd like to see it cleaned up. Another question is, what's the city gonna do with city-owned properties that aren't, for which there's no plan, such as the, the former sheriff's substation and adjoining vacant lot on Thibodeau? They ought to be, they ought to have signs on them. We ought to be selling them if we don't have a plan.
Do you want to address that?
Absolutely. As you know, at the last meeting on June 11th, you approved us. We've gone out for an RFQ for real estate services and brokerage services, and while the city, the general fund of the city doesn't own a whole lot of property, we do own the Thibodeau substation or the former substation, and that will be put on the market, and it will be sold.
Okay, is that the same appraiser in real estate that works for the successor agency?
It will be the same, it'll likely be the same real estate service that'll be used for all the other properties that the successor agency owns, as well as the Housing Authority.
Okay, last question if I can. Estimated current value, how was that derived? It's column number five.
We looked at recent appraisals that we have had in both for raw land in the commercial corridors, as well as appraisals for existing buildings over the last 12 to 24 months, and we derived the values based on those appraisals.
Okay, that's it. We'll talk about it on Thursday. Thank you, John.
And we will add the income value for the VVBA building and the Chamber.
Okay, okay. Do you have any questions from my council? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the long-range property management plan.
I'll second it.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to number C eleven, which was pulled, the agreement with VCMA and Management and Confidential Employee Compensation Plan Amendments, and that was pulled by the public. Do you, do you need a report, or would you like, okay, just the speaker, Chuck Rabel?
A couple of questions first. One is, what's the unfunded liability to CalPERS by the city?
Approximately sixteen million dollars. Sixteen million dollars.
Sixteen million dollars, a fourth of an annual general fund. Okay. I saw on one of the blogs that the CalPERS is going to increase the city share, or the, whatever it's pending, that they're going to increase it by fifty percent. The other thing is, have we done anything to cut back on overtime? Two million dollars in the last budget, a million seven for the fire department.
We, we absolutely have done a lot over the last five years to cut back on a lot of expenditures, including overtime, I think as you're well aware by attending these meetings. And in terms of the fire department, we just hired six new firefighters, which will assist in cutting back on some of the overtime. And typically, you know, city staff is deployed, or in this case with VCMA, you know, the Public Works Department, overtime is used very sparingly for special projects that can't be accommodated during the normal work week, such as asphalt paving. We do that a lot on Saturdays, so that we don't create traffic problems throughout the city, but we're very sparingly in using our, our overtime.
Lastly, I'd like to read from Sunday's editorial in the Union Tribune. "A number of cities, including San Diego, Carlsbad, Solana Beach, Imperial Beach, have already instituted meaningful pension reform. Others, including Coronado, Vista, San Diego County, haven't done enough. To avoid draconian cuts in service, city and county leaders need to address this problem. Now is the time." Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add to the city council and for the public's benefit, back in two thousand and four, Vista was the first city in the county for where the employees started paying, paying their fair share of the employee PERS rates. And so, we did that, we were the first. And in addition, the Pension Reform Act, which just went into place in January, has rolled back pension amounts for new employees coming into the system. And so, just like all the other agencies that Mr. Rabel mentioned, as well as all the cities and agencies in California, we all fall under that act.
I'll let that go. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our consent calendar, and the next item, what?
Going to vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry, forgot to vote on that. Please, do I have a first?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
I need a motion.
Second that motion.
Okay, sorry, I thought we were, okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Now, moving on. The next item, we completed our consent calendar, and the next item is a discussion item on the issue of expanding the city's current prohibitions against smoking. As you all remember, we discussed this item in our last meeting, but postponed any vote until today because of last-minute changes to one of the ordinances that had been provided. However, before we get too far into the discussion of ordinances, this council needs to discuss and possibly take action on the initial staff recommendation, which is whether or not we want to consider making a change to all of, to our current ordinance. So, once we have come to a decision on that first issue, if it is to move forward with modifications, then we can discuss the two alternatives or any other options the city council may wish to entertain. So, at this time, I'd like to hear from my fellow council members about the initial question, whether we want to change, consider making a change to our current ordinance at all. Councilmember Cole, followed by councilmember Aguilara.
Thank you. I think we do need to address the current ordinance since it has some outdated language in it, based on new state laws and so forth. So, we do need to make change to that ordinance. After reviewing all the discussions, listening to speakers last week, I'll, I'll reserve my, my support as a, as a, as a motion, but I, I'm very pleased with what staff has come up with for the proposal that they're, that they've given to us this evening, and would hope that the council would give it consideration as we go forward.
Councilmember Aguilara.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not opposed to updating for current state law. I think that certainly makes sense, but I'm not interested in introducing any new laws at all possible.
Okay. Councilmember Cody? I mean Campbell.
I definitely think we need to hear this issue and introduce the recommendations of either the option one or option two, modifying our current municipal code to include outdoor dining areas in part of our prohibited places, as well as completely updating all those areas that are out of date with state law, since I believe this ordinance hasn't been updated for many provisions of it since nineteen ninety-two. It's time we do some work on bringing this section up to date.
Okay. Then, would you like to hear a staff report, or?
Councilmember.
Oh, she's not, you didn't push your button, okay.
Sorry, that's okay. I would reiterate what Councilman Aguilar said, that the city ordinance needs to be revised per California state law, but I would not be interested in updating it any further than that.
So, let's see, so what does that mean? Do I have, I have two foreign, what did he say? He said no, so we have no? Oh. I, I, all I would care to have is that it updated, so it's updated with state law. So, that makes three of us that would, so where does that leave us then?
Sounds like three with state law.
Okay, then I, do you want to hear from the speakers anyway?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll hear from the speakers. Okay. So, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, I have eight speakers, starting with Nanette Stam, followed by Gina Knutson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Nanette Stam, and I'm a Vista resident, as well as the Director of the Health Promotion Center at Vista Community Clinic, and I would like to commend you for taking time to thoughtfully consider revising the city's smoking ordinance, and hopefully to include smoke-free outdoor dining. You may receive and have already received critiques from business owners and residents opposing the ordinances before you, claiming that passing such an ordinance infringe on smokers' liberties, cause an undue burden on business, and is unnecessary because second-hand smoke is not dangerous. I caution you against using those criteria as a basis for making your decision. First of all, if you are considered, concerned with protecting people's liberties, consider the majority of Californians and Vistans who are non-smokers. Non-smokers do not always have a choice to avoid second-hand smoke, particularly if they work at a restaurant that allows smoking in the outdoor dining area. Secondly, many cities in San Diego County and throughout California have adopted smoke-free outdoor dining ordinances. To date, there is no credible evidence that these ordinances have a negative effect on businesses. If anything, the opposite is true, with businesses experiencing an increase in customer satisfaction and employee health, as well as a decrease in business costs. Finally, it is a myth that second-hand smoke is not dangerous. Numerous studies highlight the harmful effects of second-hand smoke exposure. The California Air Resources Board, the U.S. Surgeon General, and the EPA all list second-hand smoke as a known human carcinogen. I encourage you to consider the facts and the public support for smoke-free outdoor dining when you cast your vote this evening. Thank you.
Gina Knutson, followed by Jesus Manzaro.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Gina Knutson, and I'm the program manager for the Tobacco Control Program at Vista Community Clinic. And at the city council meeting on, held last June eleventh, we presented to the council five hundred and twenty-five signatures of Vista restaurants, Vista residents, excuse me, and a hundred and eighty-seven postcards signed by Vista residents as well, which were gathered by the Smoke-Free North County Youth Squad. The total number between the petitions and the postcards was seven hundred and twelve Vista residents that support smoke-free outdoor dining patios. I also talked about the public opinion poll that was taken from sixteen hundred residents across North County. Results showed that ninety-seven percent of non-smokers and more than half, which was fifty-six percent, of smokers preferred smoke-free outdoor dining. This is not a surprising statistic, as California's smoking rate is only twelve percent, and in San Diego County, it is even lower than that. We also delivered education packets to each restaurant in the city with an outdoor dining patio, including a cover letter stating when the council member, when the council meeting was going to be, and inviting them to come and participate and give their opinion or view on this, on the topic. Smoke-free outdoor dining patios is already catching on here in Vista, as there are eighty-seven restaurants with patios, and twenty-one of these have smoke-free policies already in place, and they're enjoying the benefits that come with this type of policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesus Manzano, followed by Tom Fleming.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and city council members. I'm speaking on behalf of the North Coastal Youth Prevention Coalition. First, I'd like to start off by saying good afternoon again. It's lovely today, right? It's sunny, it's summer, it's a nice place to be, but someone can enjoy this day. That person is my neighbor, Ms. Judy. Ms. Judy suffers from lung disease that has been gravely affected by her husband's smoke, his smoking habits. She herself is not a smoker, but because of the second-hand smoke emitted by her husband, her lung problems have increased and become more physically demanding and have her, require her to stay at home. So, it is our duty to realize the effects of second-hand smoking. That's why we're here today to ask you guys, ask you to consider enacting the outdoor smoke-free dining, so that our people, our Vista citizens, are not affected by second-hand smoke, so that in the long run, they do not have to suffer those consequences that they did not even choose to take, they did not choose to smoke, but because of the inconsiderate people at the outdoor diners that do smoke, the consequences extend to them. So, as fair-minded people, it is our duty to respect the majority of the citizens and consider their well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Fleming, followed by Chuck Rabel.
My name is Tom Fleming. I'm a business owner downtown, a member of the Planning Commission, I'm a Vista resident on Grapevine. Today, I'm not speaking to you as one of those. I'm talking to you as, as a citizen of this country and the liberties that are, that are we losing on a daily basis on all, in all areas. If this was a discussion about smoking, I would be the first to say, I'm against it. I have a condition that he's probably talking about. I have COPD, which is chronic obstructive pulmonary disease. It's a condition that's brought on by smoking, working in dusty areas, and I've worked in shoe repairing most of my life. I've worked in a paper mill, and I've been a smoker for thirty-seven years. Twelve years ago, just when I found out my daughter was pregnant with my grandkids, I'd always told myself I was never going to smoke around them, so I quit while she was pregnant, and so I've been smoke, I've been a non-smoker for twelve years. Second-hand smoke bothers the heck out of me. I don't like being around it, I don't want to be around it, but there's ways to deal with that. I just feel that if, if you want to get rid of smoking, you have to, we need to ban alcohol, ban tobacco, make it illegal, and then governments have to give up all the taxes they get from and all that kind of stuff. As long as tobacco is a legal product, we as free citizens have the right to, to sit in patios, and if somebody starts to smoke, you have the right as a free citizen to ask that person, could you move over, could you move to another place? That person has a right to, to move on too. Business owners have the right to decide, as, as you saw a while ago, some already have and some don't. So, the business owner should have the right to make the decision, is he gonna, he or she going to allow the smoking, or they're not going to allow the smoking? There's old sayings that you eat an elephant one bite at a time, and you, you can't boil a frog, you can put it in hot water and heat the heat up, and you, it'll boil it. And that's what's happened to our liberties over the time. Every time we give up just a little bit here, a little bit there, eventually that elephant's going to get eaten, we're going to have the whole thing gone. So, consider that when, when you're thinking about this, and I just, I just wish that you would consider standing up for liberty and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Chuck Rabel, followed by Mary Donahue.
Let's keep in mind that tobacco has been part and partial of the American culture since the people landed on Plymouth Rock, four hundred years. Last time, the Chamber was here to express its concern about the outdoor ban, and unfortunately, they're not here today, but that is their position. My position is let's, let the marketplace do its work. If we need to update, to confirm with, conform with state law, okay, fine, but let's not go overboard and back Mr. Campbell's thing. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Donahue, followed by Joe Collegian.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mary Donahue. I'm a volunteer for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I live and work in Vista, and I am here again to support the outdoor smoking ban. My sister passed away in two thousand and one from cancer, and watching someone gasp for air is very unpleasant, so I'm going to fight to make it so that no other families have to go through this. American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network supports this ordinance in advance. Thank you for passing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Collegian, followed by Linda, is it Barbary?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Joe Collegian. For the last twenty years, I've served as a council member and mayor of the city of Solana Beach. I also serve in the Leadership Board of the American Lung Association. During those four terms in office, I swore to protect, as all of you have, to protect the health, the safety, and the welfare of the citizens of this city, and those who work, play, and visit the city of Vista. I'm here as a resource, to act as a resource on this issue, and to ask you to join the hundred and eleven other cities in the state of California who have passed ordinances restricting smoking in outdoor dining. Join the cities in San Diego County of Chilavista National City, El Cajon, Del Mar, Encinitas, Carlsbad, Solana Beach, and we're waiting for second readings in a couple of other cities, including the city of San Diego, which has already passed it for outdoor cafe dining. Join the other venues, such as Petco Park, the zoo, Wild Animal Park, college campuses, hospitals, to name just a few. I realize many have concerns about individual rights and liberties of those who smoke. I too have individual rights. I value individual rights. I value the right of the ninety percent, eighty-eight to ninety-two percent, of those who do not smoke, and, and who want to enjoy patio dining with their families and friends. I value the rights of the waiters, the waitresses, the busboys, busgirls, receptionists, and others who want to work in a healthy and safe environment. Today, I had a conversation with Matt Hall, the mayor of Carlsbad. They passed an ordinance at five-zero. He told me that he originally He told me that he originally, and we had a discussion about this because I'm very aware of their situation, that he had doubts about passing an ordinance for patio dining in their city. They have a tremendous amount of people from all over the world come into Carlsbad. But he wanted me to tell you today that he has had no complaints, and he has only had compliments for passing this ordinance. And he said, and he wanted me to tell you, that this was a win-win-win situation for all. He went on to tell me about a waitress who had worked at one of the very popular establishments over there, and you can imagine which one it is, Carlsbad. She worked there for over excess of 12 years.
Joe, you have to wrap up.
Okay. Well, I won't tell you about her conversation then. I've heard the government shouldn't be regulating local businesses, but the fact that we do it, we regulate and enforce their general plans, our zoning laws, sign ordinances, parking requirements, health and safety regulations, and yes, we even regulate smoking in restaurants and in patio. Please don't make this a political issue, it's a health issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Linda, is it Barbary? Okay. And followed by Erica Leary.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Thank you so much for your time. I want to make sure that I emphasize to you how important the American Cancer Society believes this kind of a policy is. We know that when people are exposed to secondhand smoke, there's a number of carcinogens that they are inadvertently and unwillingly being exposed to, and a smoke-free policy in outdoor dining will protect employees as well as guests who attend and participate in the experience. Smoke-free laws help protect them, and they also keep kids from smoking. And, we've had a lot of smoke-free laws in California and in other states, and as that growth has happened, there's been an increase in allegations that smoke-free laws really will hurt local economies, and I'm sure that's one of the concerns that you have in that business owners are your constituents. But I want to make sure that you understand that careful, scientific, and economic analyses have demonstrated that smoke-free laws don't hurt business, and in fact, may help it, depending on the community's smoke-free status, and in California, we know we have that benefit. In California, after the smoke-free laws were passed, 2005, there was an economic analysis done about how those smoke-free laws distributed, you know, how they impacted the revenues in bars and restaurants. And, again, using tax revenue data, they demonstrated that this effect was not there, that there was no negative impact, and in fact, the restaurants law was associated with an increase in restaurant revenues, and the 1998 smoke-free bar laws associated with an increase in bar revenues. It's clearly not a problem for businesses, and across the country, state and local chapters of business associations like chambers are endorsing smoke-free laws. The CEO of the San Luis Obispo Chamber of Commerce basically said the same thing, that initially, they were afraid of it, but, and they, but they kind of just jumped in and said, "Okay, well, we know this is a good thing," and they did it, and they found that the effects have been extremely positive, quote-unquote. So we know that businesses are going to be well-served by this. But I want to make one point, and that is that when a business owner decides on his or her own to have a business that is smoke-free, unless there's a policy that requires it, they can't really offer that experience, because if a nearby restaurant has a non-smoke-free policy, that person who's enjoying the smoke-free restaurant can't enjoy that smoke-free restaurant in that smoke, doesn't actually know to stay in the restaurant property. So I think it's in the best interest of the society and of our rest, and our constituents for you to adopt, and just modify your ordinance so that it covers that. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Leary, followed by Stephanie Jackel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Erica Leary, and I'm the Program Manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, managed by Vista Community Clinic. We work in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I spoke to you last time this was addressed, but in your comments, I would like you to address the fact that in your general plan, your Healthy Vista Element, you did state that you wanted to be a leader in health decisions. Three of you were on the council when that was adopted in 2011, and the Healthy Vista Element states that the goal is to incorporate health considerations into the city's policies, programs, decisions, and development activities, and to acknowledge and strengthen the relationship between planning decisions and public health outcomes. And it, again, it specifically has an item regarding tobacco that says encourage the establishment of tobacco-free outdoor spaces such as outdoor dining areas. So if you are now changing your mind and being a health leader and not joining the growing number of cities adopting smoke-free outdoor dining policies, I would like that included in the discussion as to why you would not include that, those considerations that resulted from a lot of community input, discussions, and feedback in developing that general plan. It's been a lot of discussion about freedoms and liberties. It's rare to find a smoker that doesn't want to quit. Smoking is an addiction, it tapped often before the age, the legal smoking age of 18. Many suffer a lifetime of smoking and succumb to the hazards of those smoking-related illnesses. And so to think that that liberty of freedom of smoking should be held to a higher regard than those of, the freedoms of people to breathe clean air as they're dining on outdoor dining patios does not seem to be a logical conclusion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephanie Jackel, was our last speaker, actually.
Thank you very much. My name is Stephanie Jackel. I really did read all of this from the agenda report, I promise. Obviously, changing Vista's regulations to, at the minimum, meet the state regulations or requirements would be a good thing, so please, let's do that. However, I have a question, and I, I just couldn't figure it out. If you change only to reach the level of the state regulations, does that include outdoor dining?
No.
He doesn't. That's what I was afraid. If it does not, then I ask you, please, safeguard the health and safety of people who want to be in the outdoor dining spaces, as well as the people who work there, just as Erica Leary just said. Please include the outdoor patios in Vista's regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Council Member Speakers here. Deputy Mayor Coles, first.
Thank you. Well, this certainly has been an issue of great interest and concern and feedback, and the feedback that I've gotten from many people that I talk to is they, they would like to see the outdoor dining areas of restaurants smoke-free. I have, I've talked to two friends, one who I spent time with at a Semper Fi fundraiser yesterday, who's a chain smoker, and he lives in Carlsbad, and I said, "Jean, how does the Carlsbad ordinance affect you? I mean, has that been good or bad?" And he said, "You know, I would never smoke in a, in a restaurant or around a restaurant, because people are eating there, and it interferes with, with their, their atmosphere, their, their, the environment that they're, they're dining in." He said, "It's just common courtesy." I talked to another person who basically told me the same thing from San Diego. The air is not a property right, and smoke is pretty amorphous, so if as a business owner who wants to have my restaurant open to smoking, I'm affecting, as was mentioned earlier, a whole area around my restaurant who may or may not want to have smoke imposed on their, their dining experience. A couple of examples. I took my family to a restaurant downtown where they allowed smoking in the outdoor patio. We don't smoke, we don't like to have the smell of that while we're eating. And, we were sitting way inside, and smoke drifted in. Suddenly, I felt like I was in a smoking restaurant. You can't really stop where the air goes. It was like the old days where they had the air, you could fly on an airplane and sit in the back where you could smoke, or the front where you couldn't smoke, and you know, the whole airplane was a smoke-filled capsule. Saturday night, we went down to Mother Earth Brewery, and Mother Earth Brewery has signs posted, handwritten signs, "No smoking within 25 feet of their, of their operation." Active, busy, it was crowded, the Highland Games were going on, people in kilts playing bagpipes all up and down the street. It was really an exciting place to be on a Saturday night in Vista. And so I walked up and down that growing area, and, and noticed that we have a new wine shop going in, and I, I was, I talked to the proprietor there at length. Nobody was smoking at any of the venues along the way, there was nobody smoking. However, I had, on a previous time, had customers at a restaurant that doesn't have smoking complain because smoke was drifting from a smoking area where it's permitted into their area. So, I, I think it's, it's coming, the, the balance of non-smokers to smokers is increasing, to defend something that is as unhealthy and unsafe, to me, I, I don't have any, any questions about it. However, I think that the proposal before us tonight that has been prepared by staff mimics, I think, a lot of Carlsbad's ordinance, which has been very successful, as mentioned to us earlier, and I would like to make a motion to adopt staff's smoking ordinance, which would not only bring us up to date with state law, but also narrowly define the banned smoking areas to, to, to the dining, restaurants, and outdoor dining. I'm not interested at this point in expanding that into other public areas, that may be a discussion down the road, but right now, I'm just trying to improve the quality of our dining experience here in Vista, so that, that's my motion.
Council Member Campbell.
Thank you, Council Member Coles. To briefly address your motion right quick, I would like to ask the city attorney to go over one brief change that I have requested to be looked at for the staff-proposed ordinance in regards to the definition of enclosed dining area and definition A for smoke, if you could.
Councilman Campbell had inquired whether or not the definition of enclosed dining area in the ordinance that is part of recommendation number two might be amplified to reflect the language that is in the draft ordinance that he offered as part of this agenda item. The definition that is in the existing ordinance would be changed from an area enclosed by a roof and walls with appropriate openings for ingress and egress, to an area in which outside air cannot circulate freely to all parts of the area, and includes an area that one, has any type of overhead cover, whether or not that cover includes vents or other openings, and at least two walls or other vertical boundaries of any height, whether or not those boundaries include vents or other openings, or, two, has three walls or other vertical boundaries that exceed six feet in height, whether or not those boundaries include vents or other openings. The city attorney's office has no intrinsic problems with that request of change. I have copies of his change here available in print for anyone who is interested in looking at it. The, I will leave it to Councilman Coles to explain the reason why he thinks this is preferable to the existing definition, but we have no problem if the council would wish to swap definitions.
Okay. May I speak to that, or do you still?
No, I, I was just going to ask if you would amend your motion to include that definition under enclosed dining area.
Well, at, at the, at the risk of making this kind of a five separate issue vote, I don't think we're going to get consensus, but the language prepared by staff has proven to be effective, successful, and workable in Carlsbad, and the, the definition here, and I did read it, it becomes very, it, it, it's almost confusing, because it has so many ifs, ands, and details, and I would prefer to get something in place that is simple, workable, and, and proven, and, and see if that works. If, if that doesn't work, then maybe we need to come back to the drawing board, if in fact, we can even get the staff's recommendation to be approved by the council. So, I would like to, to stick by my motion to approve the, the city's draft as written.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second on that motion? If not, Councilmember Rigby? The motion dies without a lack of a second.
No, I'm, so.
Oh, you're.
I, I'm still thinking here. I'll second Councilmember Coles' motion to adopt staff's option number two, the revised municipal code, section 8.12. And, I'd like to say a few comments about why it's critical, from a business standpoint, economic standpoint, and a public health standpoint, that we, as the city council in Vista, approve an ordinance that addresses not only bringing our code up to date with the minimums of state law, but adopting an ordinance that prohibits smoking for public health protections in outdoor dining areas. Look, the comments that I've received from the naysayers are, "Well, just don't go there. If you want to protect the employees, they shouldn't work there, they should work somewhere else, they shouldn't take the job that has an outdoor patio, they know better." I mean, these are comments that are from desperate individuals who don't want to go with the times of understanding that secondhand smoke is harmful. These are the same individuals that complained when we talked about years ago prohibiting smoking indoors. Said, "Hey, it's sufficient to have one half the restaurant smoke-free, and the other half, you can have smoking in the other half, and it won't affect the other folks." Well, guess what? That's a joke. So, if we want to say that we don't want to prohibit smoking on outdoor dining patios because it's your choice whether or not to go there, the same principle applies. What about the business next door that has an outdoor patio that wants to prohibit smoking, but the next-door business doesn't prohibit it? Guess what? That secondhand smoke travels the distance adjacent to the other business, and you might as well be sitting right next to the smoker. You know, Stanford University did a study that said secondhand smoke levels and the toxic chemicals outdoors on an outdoor patio can be the same levels as if you're sitting indoors at a smoke-filled bar. So, the argument that it doesn't affect you unless you want to go there is a fallacy. So let's put that aside, let's not use that argument anymore, that it's your choice, because it's not. Unless you want to sit inside at your own home and not go outside, that's no longer your choice, but we can't allow ourselves to look at, two, I think we had two businesses out of the 87 businesses come forward at our last council meeting. They were all notified, they were all informed. So, if we want to blow this out of proportion and say that the business community isn't for this, you're wrong. You know, other chambers throughout San Diego County took a progressive action and supported these ordinances. Why? Because I think National City was the one that said, "They want to be a family-friendly community." They want to make it where families with their children can go out on a Friday night and eat at a restaurant, not having to worry about toxic chemicals from secondhand smoke, because a few inconsiderate individuals wanted to sit outside and eat next to them and smoke. So what we need to do- So what we need to do is move Vista in a direction that puts us as a leader, along with 111 other cities throughout California, at protecting public health and recognizing that it doesn't hurt business. It doesn't. If anything, it helps. Study after study has shown that. So while I believe that eventually it would be nice to have a more comprehensive ordinance that protects people at street fairs, at farmers' markets, and the like, which is what was put forward in the, the ordinance that I brought forward, and also protects in all indoor places, I think that a good start, and I'm willing to, to support this, is staff's revised municipal code that would include the enclosed dining areas and unenclosed dining areas, so that we can at least move in the right direction. And that we can be recognized as a city that is family-friendly and that will want, and that we want to improve the economic conditions of our city. You know, let's not be stuck in a past bygone era where we think that secondhand smoke isn't harmful and deadly. Let's move our city in the right direction, let's move Vista forward so that we can improve our city for our residents and those that vacation here and come here from other cities. So I urge the council to pass this ordinance, and I will be support of option two, and as I seconded Councilmember Coles' motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to city staff for putting together this proposal, and all of the members of the audience who have come here this evening and who have taken the time to formulate your thoughts and to come and share your thoughts with us, and also the people who have sent emails and made phone calls and sent letters to City Hall. I really appreciate hearing from the community and what your thoughts are on this. Having said that, and having heard some of the speakers talk tonight, I'm actually am very encouraged by the numbers that we hear. Anywhere from 88 to 92 percent of Californians are non-smokers. I think that's a really great number, and we have come a long way for those of us who can remember the 60s and the 70s, where the numbers were probably a little bit opposite of that, and where it can be very opposite of that in other parts of the country. So we have come a long way with that. And the numbers in the surveys, especially what Councilmember Campbell has just reiterated, there are many studies and surveys that show that businesses actually benefit from having non-smoking areas by doing that themselves, or whether in an area where it was imposed by law. So again, I find those numbers to be very encouraging in California that we can do that. And I think the fact that whether it's 88 percent or 92 percent that are non-smokers, you know, that gives you, was it 12 to 8 percent who are smokers? And a lot of those smokers are very considerate, like Councilmember Coles' friends, who don't smoke in public places and who don't smoke in dining areas out of respect for themselves, their family members, and those around them. I think where I would like to see this issue go is, first of all, tobacco products are not illegal in this country, and I think that's a fight that is not what we are here tonight to discuss. I think that's something that should be dealt with on another level. I think education that the American Cancer Society has done, the Vista Community Clinic and the North County Prevention Coalition have done, as well as many others, those education programs are working, as evidenced by the fact that it's 88 to 92 percent of Californians that do not smoke, and the businesses who benefit from non-smoking areas. So I think rather than having more laws imposed on our citizens' personal behaviors, I think we should do more education for our community, for our kids, for our businesses, and perhaps have these forums with the chambers of commerce, with the different businesses, to, to help them understand the benefit of their business if they go with non-smoking. So I just want to say thank you for bringing those numbers forward and letting us see how California really is going in the right direction. But at this point, I think it's, it's a self-motivation, and it's something that we can continue, and I would like to see that education continue, but not have it imposed by, by legislation by local governments. So I would encourage updating to state mandates.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without going through all the comments that Councilmember Rigby made, I support everything you said. I think it's, we've made a lot of progress in the state of California because of the existing laws that we've enacted in the past, and I think mostly by groups that are here today, that are educating the public and educating our children. I know, I used to smoke cigars at one time until my kids got older, and I started realizing, I mean, they were pointing it out. I mean, because they, they get, they get their education right now in school, and I'm very grateful for that. And so, I mean, it stopped me from smoking cigars. And I think that, like I said, we've moved a, a long ways, but from what I've heard from the people that were here today is that we have come that, that far. And there is businesses out there already making that choice. Starbucks this morning announced that they were going to go ahead and reiterate their corporate mandate that no smoking would be allowed on their properties. I've spoken to the Starbucks here locally, and they confirmed that with me. And there is, I asked about some people that I saw smoking by their establishment, and they said they have to be 25 feet away from the door, and we have a designated area where they can smoke. They just can't smoke in our property, and they have an area where they do that. So, and I've spoken to Leroy about this in the last meeting, I told him, I don't, I don't take my family to his place because of the smoking. Last night, I, my kids wanted to get something to eat, we went to Chili's. We don't have to deal with it there. That's a choice that I decided to make. And I think that businesses would be smart to ban smoking, but that's their choice. I spoke to another local businessperson here in Vista, and he, he allows smoking on his property. And he says there's people out there all the time, and that's, they're his customers. And he doesn't, I said, don't you mind picking up the cigarette butts? He says, I pick up probably 40, 50 a day. Says, that's part of my business, and those are the people that come to my business. So I hate to deprive somebody like that who thinks that's part of their business. They obviously cater to a different public than, or a different customer than what we have here today, speaking on behalf of this ordinance. But that is their choice. And I did want to address something that Councilman Campbell alluded, or I guess you quoted about Stanford research. I got a article today sent by a constituent, and it was from the New York Times, and so the quote is actually from the New York Times, about the research at Stanford found that levels of tobacco smoke within three feet of a smoker outside, so three feet outside, are comparable to inside levels. But no evidence demonstrates that the duration of outdoor exposure in places where people can move freely about is long enough to cause substantial health damage. So I think it's really important that we do look at the entire article before we make decisions and quote those, those things to support our case. I have not read the whole article, so I don't have enough information to, to really support this ban on smoking. I believe we should update to state law, and I can only support that.
Well, and I would say, I, Councilmember Rigby said it so well, all of it, and also Councilmember Aguilera, and I, I'm so conflicted because, because I don't smoke. Would it bother me if a smoking ordinance passed? It probably wouldn't, because I don't like to go to restaurants and have people smoking. But I have a real problem with putting more regulations on businesses, and I think every, the state is over-regulated as far as people's lives and businesses, and so I, that, I have a, that's, my core values are not, not to vote for something like that. But, so I'm, I'm going to actually support that for, for all of those, and I see I have one more speaker. Councilmember Campbell.
I, I just want to address a couple of comments that I, I've heard. First off, you know, the, the U.S. Surgeon General found there's no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. So why do we keep hearing, I don't know if the research is valid, and if it's there to support if secondhand smoke is harmful sitting on a patio or whatnot. Look, it is. The research has been done. The, the full Stanford study is well over, I believe, 50 pages long, which I read through previously. It addresses the levels of smoke at certain distances and whether that area is enclosed. So it gets a little bit more complex than Cliff Kaiser's email forwarding a portion of the New York Times article. Look, he's the same person that came up here last time at our meeting and said secondhand smoke's not harmful. I mean, what a joke. So if we put this before the public, and they said, and we ask the public, in the city of Vista, do you want an ordinance that bans smoking at restaurant patios so we can have Vista restaurants be smoke-free? I guarantee you that a vast majority of those voters would say absolutely yes, because the question, the comments that I've gotten time and time again from people that are smokers in public say, why is this an issue? Why hasn't this already been done? I have not had one comment from random people, from dozens and dozens and dozens, don't take away my right to do something, whether they're a smoker or not. They've just said, why is this even an issue? Why is this a political issue? This is a logical, smart thing to do. So if you're concerned about the public getting upset about this, they won't if you pass it. If you don't pass it, you're going to have a lot of people scratching their heads going, what is that council thinking? Because we want that. It's not a Democrat, it's not a Republican, it's not a nonpartisan issue. It's an issue simply of public health. So if we want to be the city in North County that says we only want to do the minimums to protect public health, by all means, let's do that, so we can have cities and residents from all over San Diego County and beyond look at us and go, why didn't they do that? Because as I, as I believe, from my research and contacting other chambers, our chamber was the only one to vote to oppose this. I've spoken to the Carlsbad Chamber staff months ago, and they said, never would we oppose an ordinance like this, because it's good for business, it's the right thing to do. Other chambers supported it. So when I contacted other business organizations that said, you know, our chamber opposes it, I said, wow, what are they thinking? That's silly. That's unconscionable. So maybe we want to be different. Maybe we want to encourage more smokers to come to town, like one of our downtown business associations said in their vote to oppose this. Why don't we become a destination city for smokers by allowing smoking? I mean, that's hilarious. That's not going to improve our city image. Don't we want to improve our image for economic development? Don't we want to drive business to come to Vista? Don't we want to encourage other people from other cities to come to Vista to eat and shop and spend money so that we can improve our city? Yes. So if we don't want to approve this, and we only want to adopt state minimum standards, that's unfortunate. It's sad. There's, I'm tired of hearing there's a right to smoke. There isn't. There's a right to breathe clean air. So let's look at it that way. There's a right to breathe clean air. Why don't we enhance that right, not the right to smoke, which there is no right to smoke? So regulations that we put in place to protect other people, we have no text and driving, so you can't text on your phone. Why don't we repeal that? Because that's impeding on a right to text, right? So the ultimate question comes down to, do we want to be a city that's known for being family-friendly and protecting public health or not? A vote for an ordinance is for saying yes. Vote against this ordinance is saying no, we do not want to be a family-friendly city, we do not want to be a city that protects public health. That's as simple as it can be. Yes or no? So that's all I have to say. It's whether we move forward or not on this. Thank you.
So where do we want to go? We have, we have a motion in a second, so I guess we would, we'll call for the vote on that.
Nobody made a mistake. I thought somebody hit the wrong button maybe.
Oh, nobody hit the wrong button, that motion failed. So then I would entertain another motion, I guess. I guess I have a question, though. If we're, if we're going to, so if we're not doing the second, the, the city red light, that, then where are we going with the motion? Do we just ask for it to be updated?
Yes, Mayor, if that's what you wish to do, it's largely accomplished in the, in the staff ordinance, but since the staff ordinance did also accommodate the prohibition on unenclosed dining areas, we'll have to go in, take that out, and restore some other language that had been removed in the process of creating this updated ordinance. And we'll bring that back to you in August.
Can't we just update the, just make a motion now to update the ordinance to state law? Wouldn't that be easier?
The, if you just wanted to have state law, you could simply repeal the ordinance and let state law take effect.
I see.
Carlsbad actually is in that position. They only have state law, except for what they just added related to smoking and unenclosed dining areas. Otherwise, they do not regulate smoking other than as is regulated by state law. Vista's code actually has always been beyond state law. The provisions that are in here that are obsolete haven't been obviously enforced, and there are other provisions which actually are beyond the provisions of state law. So if you want to preserve those, I think we'd have to bring back an ordinance to do that.
Okay. So then I would entertain a motion, I guess.
No, we're not bringing it back.
Oh, so we don't need a motion, we're just going to bring it back?
Well, I believe I'm being instructed to revise the ordinance, to remove the obsolete provisions from it and return it, but without the provisions relating to outdoor dining prohibitions. Is, is that my understanding of the desire of a majority of the council?
Yes.
Okay. Then we will bring that back in August.
Okay. Okay, so with that, then we are moving on to...
I have a request to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember...
Just so I don't send the wrong message. I, I won't support doing just updating the state ordinance, simply because I don't want to send a message that I'm satisfied without having some provision for outdoor dining areas. So I won't support just updating to state minimums.
I'd like to reiterate Councilmember Coles' statement. I will not support a half-baked measure to only address the state minimums. And, you know, it's a sad day when the people and the voters of a city that have overwhelmingly spoken on surveys done by different organizations and opposing organizations come to the same conclusion, but, you know, I think that this is an issue that will likely be going before the voters of the city in a ballot measure in the near future. And it's unfortunate that the council can't get the act together to do something that the people want, but the people will have their chance to have their voice heard.
So with that, we move on to oral communications, and I have one speaker, Jessica Joner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jessica Jones, I'm with Poseidon Water, and I just wanted to come tonight and give you a brief update on the Carlsbad desalination project and the pipeline construction that's going on in your city right now. I know you're all probably aware of that, but the desalination project went through a 13-year permitting process, and we are underway. The construction started in Vista on June 10th on Point Seria at the corner of Westland Vista. Couple of hundred feet of pipe has been laid in Vista to date, and there is currently a detour on Specialty Drive that will be in effect for two more weeks on Point Seria. When that section's complete, another detour will be put in place on Decision Street for four weeks. And then in October, we'll be back on South Melrose heading west, and the work will be complete in Vista by the end of the year. So I wanted to thank you for your patience, and to the residents' patience while we construct this important project. And I also wanted to thank you for the coordination with your staff, they've been, really been terrific to work with, and, and the project's moving along nicely. So, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our remarks. I'll start down with Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. I just want to say again, thank you to city staff for all of your hard work and everything you do for us. And I'm just going to put a little congratulations out there to Helen, just because I'm mom and I can do that. And then I did want to say that yesterday, attending the Don Blitz at Camp Pendleton Red Beach was a very interesting experience, and I appreciated being invited to go. I learned a lot, so I want to say thank you to that.
learned a lot, so I want to say thank you to that, and I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Coles.
Thank you. I, while I didn't get to enjoy the Don Blitz after an effort to get there, I did spend yesterday in a fundraising event for the Semper Five Fund at Shatter Ridge Country Club, where we raised a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to go directly toward the support of wounded Marines, and there's no overhead, that money goes directly into the pockets of the Marines who've been wounded, and it's one of the premier events that started last year, and that was my Marine Day yesterday. Also, I just, to mention again, the vibrance of downtown, when I was there Saturday night with Janice, was really exciting, because it was a crowd of young, and, you know, a mix of all of our demographics, that were truly enjoying our downtown, and I wrote his name down there, and I forgot to bring it, the young man who's starting the fifty-barrels-of-wine tasting area down there, on up the street a little ways. He's got an exciting venue, he was looking to go to Oceanside, Kevin talked to him, and he changed his mind and came to Vista, and I think he's going to be, in fact, there was a couple there from Carlsbad, who are a member of his, of his, whatever he's got going, and they said, "This guy is great, this is going to be a great venue for your city," so I'm looking forward to that in the future, too. So I see exciting things, I was pleased, I was not pleased with the rate structure that was described to us, but I was pleased with the four degrees warmer weather, because that should produce profits at the wave, and a lot of tourism in our city, so that's all I have. Oh, one more thing. We go dark next month, so I want to wish everybody good travel plans who are traveling, and good stay-at-home plans who are staying at home.
Thanks. Councilmember Campbell. Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Councilman Coles beat me to it, but I'd like to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, since we won't be convening before that, and remind everyone of all the activities that are going to be going on here at the city of Vista. I don't know if you're going to go through that, but I'll talk about the Alta Vista Gardens. They are on top of Bringle Terrace, they claim to have the best view, and I can vouch for that, of the fireworks, so if you're not going to the city fireworks, you can also go to the Alta Vista Gardens fireworks program, and I had something else, but it slipped my mind, so I'll finish at that. Thank you. Yeah, the Highland Games, yeah, that was...
Oh, yeah, Highland Games were yesterday.
Yeah, I went for the first time, Mayor, last, this is the first time ever, and I've lived all my life in Vista, and...
Did you think about those men in kilts? Did you wear a kilt?
No, I didn't wear my kilt, and my daughter would not let me. She would have liked it, though. That was funny, but it was a fun experience, and my kids really enjoyed it, and it's just a whole nother thing that goes on that I did not know.
Councilmember Rigby actually marched with her clan in the Highland Games.
I did, I'm a member of Clan Young, and I was very honored to have them invite both myself and my daughter to march with them, both Saturday and Sunday in the opening ceremonies, and we've been going to the Highland Games for many, many, many years, since the late eighties, early nineties, and we were thrilled when they came to Vista from Rancho Santa Fe Park, to have them here in Vista, so it was a great weekend, great music, and I just want to say that in all the Facebook posts from everybody talking about the games, they all mentioned the San Diego Scottish Highland Games are really in Vista, so our name is really getting out there, and we had great attendance, it was a lot of fun.
They did have great attendance, that's their fifteenth year in Vista, they've been here fifteen years, so I did the welcome on, opened the games on Saturday, and then did a welcome also on Sunday, so I was there, and it's just amazing, if you've never been there, to see all the sheepdogs that, or they chase the sheep into this little pen, and that's kind of amazing to watch, they have the trials there, and then they also have all the men that throw those big, heavy...
Cabers.
What are they called?
Caber.
Cabers? Well, it's caber, there's just lots of heavy stuff that they throw. It's very interesting to watch, watch all that, so, anyway, so, and then tomorrow night is the Taste of Vista Downtown from four to eight, all the restaurants are down there, they have great tickets, VVVA.org for tickets, you can go online and get them. Also, tomorrow night is the Moonlight Summer Season Opens the South Pacific, running through July fourteenth, and then the next show after that is the Wizard of Oz, which will run through from July twenty-fourth to August tenth, both great shows. If you have not been in the Moonlight, you need to go, go that. June twenty-eighth is a Friday night splash from four to eight at The Wave. The Wave will be open extended hours from four to eight with fun games and prizes, this is a special ticketed event, but free to season pass holders, so you can go to the Wave, wwwthewavewaterpark.com for details on that, on the Friday splash night, June twenty-eighth, and there are no council meetings scheduled for July, the next regular city council meeting is on August thirteenth, and with that, I would wish everybody a happy time off and vacation, although some of us will still have meetings and be working, even though the city council doesn't have our meetings, so. Then I'll pass to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention on July fourth, as Councilman Aguilera mentioned, there is a fireworks celebration at Bringle Terrace Park, and there are still tickets available for dinner, if you'd like to dine in the amphitheater, great seats, great music and performances going on in there, and if you'd like to just enjoy the atmosphere in the amphitheater, you can do that for a very nominal fee and not fight the crowds at Bringle Terrace Park, so that's one opportunity. On July twentieth, in honor of our fiftieth birthday this year, is the next movie in the park, so we just had the first one, the second one is Brave, it'll be at Bringle Terrace Park, so if you'd like, get there early to secure your seat, and the movie will start at dusk, and there'll be free popcorn provided to everybody that's in attendance, as well as the youth commission selling waters and candies and things like that. And last, I just wanted to mention that the North Avenue Improvement Project is underway, so North Avenue from, what would it be? Yeah, Melrose to Maryland is closed down for widening, as well as the addition of sidewalks, so we've closed that down, and it'll be open before the school year starts in August, and so it'll be a much-needed improvement to the area, so sorry about the inconvenience, but it will be a great thing once it's done. So thank you, and have a good July.
City Attorney, Daryl Piper.
Simply, happy summer break, and happy Fourth of July to everyone.
And our city clerk, Marcy Killian, I think she has something to say tonight.
Yes, first I'd like to express appreciation to those who have already donated, and those who have signed up to participate in the City of Vista team at the American Cancer Society's Vista Relay for Life. It's truly a remarkable thing to experience, how people come together and give toward a wonderful organization and to make a difference. The event is only nineteen days away now, July thirteenth to fourteenth, twenty-four hours, nine AM to nine AM at Rancho Minerva Middle School, two-two, four-five Foothill Drive, and I'm proud to announce that our City of Vista team has raised two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars for cancer research, education, and patient services.
Wow.
So please sign up, just Google Relay for Life and type in City of Vista, or give me a call, and I'm hoping that I can have a council member come out at nine o'clock and give the welcome to the group on that morning.
I will be there, actually.
You will?
Yeah, I'll be there.
All right, so thank you very much for that, hope to see you at the track.
And what time is that, do you have a team walking?
Yes, we have a team walking.
A certain time?
Well, yeah, you'll want to be there at nine AM to give the welcome, and then I'm going to pass out a sheet and have people sign up, at what time they want to walk, but I do have several members, and I'm looking for more to come out and meet us, and thanks again.
Okay, so with that, if there's any other comments, I will be adjourned at seven thirteen, seven thirteen today.
Okay, now, July fourth, I'm going to do the presentation.